Okay. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the City of Everett Planning Commission Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner LaVera.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Okay. Has everybody gotten a copy of the minutes? Had a chance to look at them? Any comments?
Wasn't there?
Commissioner Dunn?
I was absent, so.
Oh, okay.
I have no comments.
Okay.
I'd move that we adopt the minutes.
Second.
Of the March 6th meeting, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Dunn?
Abstain.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVera?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beck?
Abstain. Thank you. Okay. Do any, we're going to go down the row here and Commissioner reports. We'll start with Commissioner Dunn.
Yeah, so I attended the Tree Committee meeting on the 15th and just have three things to report back. There's plans for an Arbor Day celebration at Garfield Park on April 11th. At 12:30, there'll be a planting. And we also had a demonstration update on Metro Everett by David, so thank you for attending. The Tree Committee was supportive of the Tree Canopy goal. They like that idea and also are looking forward to more details on the public incentives for building heights. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lark?
Nothing to report.
Nothing.
No report.
Nothing.
And no report for me. Staff comments?
Our next meeting will be on April 3rd. One of the topics will be the bringing back the marijuana retail store regulations following our February 20th meeting. And we also had more Metro, I'm sure, right, David?
Yes.
More Metro all the time.
And I'll have some comments under Other Business after the other agenda items.
Okay. At this time, are there any citizens that want to address the Planning Commission? Any comments? I think that we had someone sign up, JT Dray.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I was not able to digest the entire 20-year plan that Everett Transit just put out. And you talked about it in your last meeting, so I thought I'd try and make my way through it before I offered my comments. Quickly, I would say there were three immediate comments and they were concerns for the elderly, the working poor, and people with disabilities. I do want to thank you so, so much for the wonderful discussion you had on the topic. It's something in all of my six years at the Tac Committee I never heard the likes of. And I'm not exaggerating in the least. We just never had a discussion like that. And everyone was so informed and thank you. So maybe I thought I just don't have too much time. I'd make a few comments about your comments. Alex Lark, thank you for being so knowledgeable about what's going on in the way of the future developments in technology and transit. I think I was sort of pleased to see that the Herald editorial page writer also glommed onto something that I had presented you with information about that was BRIDJ, which was tried out in three different cities and unfortunately went bust. But it did sound like something that could be useful for Everett in the future. About the bulbouts, it prompts a lot of thoughts. And I was involved along with Sherida Burton and people that live in North Everett trying to see the Broadway corridor and proved with making the suggestion that the stations at the bulbouts be at least addressed as design elements for North Broadway. And we were in luck since Paul Kafteansky just came on board, paying attention to what was going on at the Tac Committee for various reasons to involve, to go into. And he engineered having, I forget what her name is from arts, be part of the design of the aesthetic element of the bulbouts, which makes me think, and I always did think, why if a city has its own municipal transit system, wouldn't all of the departments of the city be involved with planning that sort of an element, a whole series of stops along Broadway, which the whole thing is funded with state money. So that's one thought about that. And I appreciated the question about the seniors and how they were going to be potentially affected by the 20-year plan. And the intent is to eliminate service to people over 65 if they're not disabled. And I had suggested that actually in the past when I was 60. And now that I'm 68, it looks more appealing, but, and I actually use it. But I occasionally discuss these things with Councilmember Bader. And I said to him, you know, I did suggest that as something that they should do. And I had, the reply came back, well, it's not significant. It's just not worth bothering with. So I am trying to encourage everybody when they have these discussions to sort of put some numbers on it. And I know Councilmember Murphy did just that and came up with the fact that when they have to buy into version 1.0 or 2.0 of the Orca card, that the 1.2 million that they'll need to anti-up would probably come close to bringing them onto the edge of bankruptcy fairly soon, within five years. Why that was never something that was ever mentioned when they came to us and said, well, we'd like to make a 20-year plan. Just tell us anything you think you'd like, you know? I mean, totally unrealistic and to my mind, kind of dishonest, too. And thirdly, for the gentleman who arrived on the Segway, you're the only one I ever knew to arrive at any meeting on a Segway. I so appreciated your questions about modeling because to this day, I don't understand what really the 20-year plan intends. And by the way, it's intending a lot that's, has to be invented with probably another quarter of a million dollars expended to do that. But anyway, they have a fair of a dollar. And you probably read in the paper that CT just bumped up their fare, is intending to anyway, to, I think, $2.50. So it's hard to understand why, what the model is for the fare. To this day, I can't understand it. I hopefully, with the new administration, will have more concerns along those lines. And I think that's, we're seeing that started. So thank you so, so much for your interest and your great questions. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak? Come on up and state your name and your address to the microphone, please.
Hi, my name's Doug Dahl and I live at 3411 Cromer Avenue, just here in Everett, up in Port Gardner. And the reason I'm here is I got an email from one of my neighbors who thought this would be a good one to attend because I think the subject's going to be on the Shoreline Master Program. So, and this neighbor had a concern, and if he was true about it, it was, I thought it was a valid concern, so I thought I would come and share my concern also. And that is adding the LU-24 endorsement onto the houses that are close by to the port. And his concern is, he thought it would discourage the port from trying to work with the neighbors as far as keeping the noise and the compatibility down. Obviously, the Port of Everett's a very important part of Everett, but also so are the neighborhoods, especially the Port Gardner neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood and we certainly wouldn't want anything from the excessive noise from the port or anything to really to kind of ruin the lifestyle there. So if that is indeed true, that that would limit the port's responsibility to work with the neighborhood, I think it might be worth looking at removing that LU-24 and the overall, and the master plan. But anyway, I'm really interested in hearing what's going to go on with the port. I saw the picture of the end of Hewitt and the beautiful thing looking over the water and everything, so it seems like it could be a really wonderful thing. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to Mr. Dahl's comments. The policy that he was referring to was a draft that we had put in the Metro Plan, not in the Shoreline Master Program. And after some discussion, we did get feedback from several neighbors of the Port District and in conversations with the administration, the mayor, we're going to pull that from the Metro Plan. We will be engaging in a joint land use study with Naval Station Everett and the port will be part of that. And we think we're going to have a lot more opportunity to look at some of these compatibility questions in more detail as part of that process. And so that will just be getting started sometime later this year. And so we wanted to just hold off on any kind of a port compatibility overlay area from Metro and perhaps introduce that at a later time when we've got more information out of the joint land use study.
I've heard similar comments from some of the neighbors in that area, concerned about that particular policy. And so, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item number one, Shoreline Master Program update.
Yes. Karen Stewart with Community Planning and Economic Development Department. And I will be quickly going through a handout that I believe was mailed to the Commissioners entitled "The Public Participation Plan" and schedule for the update. And then I also have an overview slide presentation about the overall program. And then we'll have plenty of time for questions. So the document that you were distributed is part of a grant that we have with the State Department of Ecology. And this was one of the grant deliverables with that grant, with that project. And what is key to note is the schedule and how the Planning Commission will fit into this overall process. It's about a year and a half planning process that we're beginning. In fact, last night was our first meeting of ad hoc group, Shoreline Advisory Group that's been formed. And they will put together draft materials for you to look at about a little, maybe about a year from now, February or so of next year is when they'll wrap up their work. So the Public Participation Plan is the general framework that we'll be using as we do community outreach. And there's also the schedule in the back for you to refer to. So let me go ahead and do this overview slide presentation unless you have any questions about the...
A quick question, the advisory group is a professional group, isn't it?
No, actually. And we worked with our new administration, with the mayor's office, in terms of talking about what might be the best approach. There's a list in the Public Participation Plan, an extensive list of all possible stakeholders that could be involved on an advisory group. We've taken the approach to focus on our neighborhood associations. So there are 10 neighborhood associations that abut our shoreline water bodies. And so a representative from each one of those associations was invited to serve on this ad hoc committee. And then in addition to those 10 members, we have additional 15, or five members for a total of 15. So stakeholders, obvious stakeholders like the Navy and the port, Tulalip tribes, and there's a couple of others are also part of that group.
Kind of have the list here.
Yeah, the representative from the Marine Resources Committee as well as the Marshland Flood Control District round out the members.
Thank you.
So I will give sort of the background for those of you who maybe are new to knowing about our Shoreline Management Act. It dates back to 1971. And we have a very historic photo there on the left, the black and white one, of Everett in its heyday with all the industrial uses right on the shoreline, over the shoreline in many cases, and then the railroad serving as transportation. And then the photo on the right is of how the port and the Naval Station Everett look now. Sometimes there's aircraft carrier in that large berth there. So the Shoreline Management Act, though, back in 1971, was put in place as part of a public referendum. And the quote there at the bottom of the slide is, "To prevent the inherent harm in an uncoordinated and piecemeal development of the state's shorelines." So many of the shorelines were being redeveloped, but it was difficult, particularly along the marine shoreline, to ensure safe public access. And I think that with the development and the rising price of waterfront property and concern about the environment, that the act came into place. It is somewhat analogous to the Growth Management Act, although a couple decades earlier, the Growth Management Act was passed by the state in 1990. So just sort of showing the parallelism here where this really is a state program that is enacted and implemented at a local level. So on the left side of the slide, you see the Department of Commerce at the state level oversees comprehensive planning under the GMA. And then on the right-hand side, it's the Department of Ecology that oversees shoreline master programs. And then they come together and are integrated in our review of projects through SEPA. We also have regulations in our codes, critical areas, as well as permitting for various uses and activities. For the Shoreline Management Act, there are three key goals that I want you to be aware of. The first one is foster all reasonable and appropriate uses. Now, what's shown there is an illustration of the waterfront place at the Port of Everett. And what will be a big transition there will be having residential development down by the waterfront. Contrasting that with that slide that we saw with all the intensive industrial uses, that's quite a change. And in order for that to happen, of course, there had to be extensive cleanup. But the Shoreline Act does guarantee that water-dependent uses, even if they potentially could pollute, are still allowed in our shoreline areas. So paper mills, for example, that rely on extensive amounts of water are considered a water-dependent use. Hydroelectric dams, water-dependent uses. And so they have, in a way, you can think of this as a three-legged stool where these three goals have to be balanced. So the second one that's listed there and with the illustration, the photo of the Chinook salmon would be to protect the natural resources and ecological functions of our shoreline areas. And then the third is to make sure that we're promoting public access and navigation in our waterways. So the Shoreline Management Act, as I said, the Department of Ecology oversees the programs. And there are approximately 260 jurisdictions throughout the state of Washington that are required to prepare Shoreline Master Programs. So once we've prepared the program, we submit it to Department of Ecology. And it's not in effect until it's approved by the Department of Ecology. And that contrasts with our Growth Management Act comprehensive plans where we locally adopt them and we apply them. They're effective. We don't have to have a state agency approve them in order for the comp plan to be in effect. So that's a difference. And so we're required to maintain these programs and work with the state on certain types of permits. So what is a Shoreline Master Program? It's basically three different types of things. Like a comprehensive plan, it has goals and policies. So it's a policy document. But it also has development regulations. So it would be somewhat analogous to zoning, which usually is in a municipal code and not actually in your comprehensive plan. And then because it should be based on scientific conditions, there are supporting documents, some of them fairly technical, that go along with the program. And here is an illustration that the state has prepared showing where the jurisdiction applies. And the important takeaway from this would be that it applies to a portion of the water and also the lands under the water, as well as landward or the land area that many people would think of as a shoreline that is landward of the ordinary high watermark. And typically, that's 200 feet from that line. And what's illustrated here are the different areas. So the saltwater coastal shoreline is on the top of the illustration with the house shown there. And then the bottom illustration is showing the floodway and the 100-year floodplain for a river system. And then the jurisdiction also applies to certain sized lakes. So in the City of Everett, these are the water bodies that are considered subject to the Shoreline Management Act. So we have two lakes, Silver Lake, approximately 102 acres in size in southeast Everett. The requirement of size is that the water body needs, the lake, needs to be at least 20 acres of open water. So obviously, Silver Lake is big enough to meet that criteria. And there are homes with docks on portions of the lake, but there are also three fairly large city parks on Silver Lake. The second lake that is quite different than Silver Lake, Lake Chaplin, is also large enough to be under the shoreline, protected under the Shoreline Management Act. And this is a reservoir up on, in the Salton River Basin that was constructed quite a while ago for our water supply back in 1929, was when the dams were constructed up there. And in addition to providing potable water supply for Snohomish County people, it also is used to add to or augment the flows in the Salton River for fish. And as you notice, it's a protected watershed with no development around it. Another type of water body that's included under the Shoreline Master Program would be all the marine shorelines in our area. So Port Gardner Bay and then the lands 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark. And that comprises a little over 11 linear miles. And the bottom photo there is Jettie Island, which is also in the, all of Jettie Island's shoreline would be protected under the SMA. Then the third water body is our Snohomish River. Now, the Snohomish River, in addition, the saltwater, is also considered of special significance. And there's additional state policies that apply. Rivers on the west side of the Cascades that have a flow of at least 20 cubic feet per second are considered shorelines of statewide significance. And the Snohomish River with over 9,500 cubic feet per second has the average annual flow that exceeds that. So it's considered a significant water body and has extra layers of protection. One important aspect, though, to the Snohomish River is that the federal government considers it a navigable water body. So the Army Corps of Engineers is required to maintain a certain depth for the first six miles, river miles. So they periodically do dredging. Another interesting feature with the Snohomish River is looking at its entire watershed. And halfway through that slide is a dashed line. And that is the boundary between the two counties. So you'll see a little over half of the landmass of the watershed is actually in King County. And just a quick slide on the watershed connections, just reminding us how complex things are, although it starts out with the fact we all know that water flows downhill if left to its own devices. But realizing how at the mouth of the Snohomish River so much has happened upstream that we need to be planning for and working with other jurisdictions and relying on good planning up in the watershed. So cutting down trees results in more sediment, all the different resources uses, mining, agricultural uses, then residential developments on septic systems. And then we come to urban areas like Everett where we have stormwater we need to manage and we have outfalls and a wastewater treatment plant with treated water that then is flowing into the river or directly into the sound after treatment. So all of these things need to be taken into consideration. And there's a state agency that was formed about eight years ago, I believe, called the Puget Sound Partnership. They are a regional planning organization that Ellen and I both serve on. They have several committees where we're trying to make sure that the whole Puget Sound region is coordinating on restoration projects in particular. And then what is illustrated here with this colorful diagram are the various vital signs that the state and others are monitoring and trying to get a handle on how do we move the dial to improve the environment and ultimately maintain salmon runs so that we still have orca. So getting back to the City of Everett, our Shoreline Master Program has a history that dates back... dates back to 1976. So you'll remember, the act was put into law in 1971. So it took us a number of years to put together our first shoreline master program. But it was done in the 70s. And then our last big comprehensive update was in 2002, and it was appealed by several parties, and eventually the various settlements were reached in 2005. Now, since that date, there have been seven limited-scope amendments, with the last one in July 2016. So what we are being asked to do by the state is to do what's called a periodic review of our shoreline master program. And so there's specific requirements in state law of what constitutes the periodic review, and the three items are listed here. The first is we go through our program and look at what has happened since 2007 in terms of state law changes and do a comparison with how that's been either updated in our program or needs to be updated in our program. The second requirement is that we need to look at the program and see if it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, which was updated in 2015, most recently, and then development regulations, like our critical area regulations, which were also updated in 2015. And then we meet with the community, see what are called changed circumstances. And some of us were talking before this meeting about all the different redevelopments that are occurring right now along much of our waterfront. So certainly, there are some changed circumstances, new information, and perhaps some improved data that we can be considering as we do this review. Along with the guidance from the state of what we need to change in our program through this checklist, there is an opportunity for locally-initiated changes. And so in working with the Planning Commission and our Shoreline Advisory Committee, we'll try to get a little better idea of what those items might be. And one of them that staff brought forward because we wanted an opportunity, along with some funding, to update another plan that is certainly referred to in the shoreline master program, is our shoreline public access plan that was adopted in 2003. Shoreline public access has been a key concern whenever we've brought forward projects to review or changes to the shoreline. And it was certainly back in 2002, one of the top interests of the public. So we have a number of older plans that preceded this one that we want to try to make sure we've consolidated everything. And also, we have a new bike plan that was adopted back in 2011, and we'd like to look at the shoreline program and try, the plan, and try to bring it more in alignment to the style that we used in the bike plan, which has more of a priority-tiered approach and really focuses on maps and is kind of a more simplified look at what do we have in terms of existing access, what are the facilities associated with it, and put all that on a map, and then have another map that shows what the proposed, where the proposed new changes would be. And then we'd also like to make sure that we're updating and giving ourselves credit for some projects that have been completed. So unfortunately, a fair amount of our shoreline looks like this, and the railroad has told us they're not intending on moving anytime soon. So we were like, okay, fine, we'll make the beach towards the water. So here's a restoration, a recently-completed restoration project at Hallworth Park where we have a safe pedestrian crossing of the railroad and then stairs to get down to the beach, and then we've created a beach that is mimicking more what a natural Washington beach would look like. And the Marine Resource Committee of Snohomish County took the lead on putting together this Another project that's not completed yet, but certainly is well underway, is our Grand Avenue Bridge, which will be connecting the residential areas on the bluff, safely crossing the railroad and Marine View Drive. And then that's Lombardi's Restaurant in the bottom of the picture. There'll be a landing just north of that parking lot so that then people can go to the waterfront. Now here's a historical photo from the late 1970s showing water-dependent use, the log booms and rafts as part of the port operations. And then here's another historic photo back in World War II during wartime where the Navy was using Port Gardner Bay. So over all these years and all the industrial uses that have occurred on our waterfront using the water in many cases, there are quite a few superfund sites that we have been working with the primary property owners to clean up, and that will continue as the areas are redeveloped along the waterfront. And here's a graphic that the Port of Everett has put together as part of their new developments, showing additional public access opportunities. So I always include a slide like this, even in talking to you busy planning commissioners, just to remind you that there's lots of ways you can be involved in our shorelines. Serving on this group, of course, is really key, and your neighborhood associations. But you could actually be a beach watcher. There's some training you would need to do to do that. One of our representatives at the advisory committee last night told me that she didn't have the time to become an actual beach watcher. I think it's 100 hours of training. But she said she did the 20 hours of training and became a beach naturalist. And so you can be informed about how to meet with kids on the beach. She was going to meet with a group of second graders and explain what's happening on the beach and what kind of creatures live there and all of that. And there is, the Marine Resource Committee is a county organization, but there are residents from the city of Everett that serve on that group. And then as development proposals come forward, you could be on a mailing list to learn about those different activities. And with developments along our waterfront, there is a requirement for public access, either if you can safely provide it on the site, that is the preferred idea. But if you can't, then we accept funds, and the port typically provides 2% of the cost of their projects in funds that then we can use for public access where it can be safely And that's my presentation. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
We have any questions from commissioners?
Karen, could you tell us, you mentioned that there were something like seven limited-scope amendments to the master program. Can you tell us the kinds of things that might trigger those kinds of minor amendments as opposed to the comprehensive overdate that we do?
Yes, I can. Out of the seven, I was at the tail end of one of them. So I, and I'm looking to see if I have my list here with me, and of course, I don't. Several of the amendments were brought forward by the Port of Everett as they were looking at, so our shoreline master program is somewhat daunting, a couple inches of material. And as they would be wanting to propose residential development in an area that maybe was closer than 200 feet to the water's edge, and we had some restrictions on that, then they would have to go through the amendment process to have adjustments made to make it appropriate in that area. So there were several of those amendments that were brought by the port. There was one that was dealt with transportation facilities. There were some definition changes, and so some out of the seven, as I recollect, were to bring us in compliance with some change in state law. So the checklist that the city staff has prepared, that the state has listed from 2007 to now, all the legislative changes that need to be addressed, it's about six pages worth. Several of those we have already addressed with some of the amendments that were made.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
I'm a little bit concerned with 10 of the stakeholders being from neighborhood groups. I support neighbors, neighborhood groups and associations, but there's, you know, planned for participation with meetings during your planning process to give presentations to the different neighborhood groups. I'm concerned that it's excluding environmental land use groups, tribal groups. You know, this includes our largest water supply. You identified 30 different key participants, and to have 10 members of a stakeholder group from one section, can you give a little more input on why the mayor decided to concentrate on neighborhoods as the majority participant?
I think, well, certainly, all of the stakeholders that are listed on pages five and six, although they are not necessarily serving directly on our shoreline advisory group, but they're notified throughout this process and will be reviewing drafts of the documents and can comment as they see fit. One group that you did mention, the tribes, have special status for obvious reasons in our shoreline areas. And the Tulalip tribes have a seat on the advisory committee, but the Mukul shoots don't necessarily. But we send all of our SEPA documents to them, and they will be informed and have an opportunity to comment. We can also put together other groups other than the advisory committee throughout the process. So if somebody requests that, we could do that. You mentioned environmental groups. Do you have a particular group that you think we should reach out to?
You have the three listed, or either, any of those three included on the advisory committee?
Not at this time.
Okay. And so the committee will be responsible for the final document? Is that accurate?
No. The advisory committee is advising this, advising your group, the Planning Commission, along with, if future-wise, we'll be reviewing the plan and submitting comments along the way, also would be under your consideration. So similar to most of our planning processes, the Planning Commission is the, is sort of the major planning review group, and then you advise the city council. So this is similar. But we also have Department of Ecology and all of their technical experts who are also involved with this process. And right now, we're envisioning doing a combined review, so that would start with the Planning Commission. So Department of Ecology will probably have their staff here along with me, and will be doing their review concurrently. So we'll have lots of different people looking at the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Good job. Thank you for the presentation. It's very informative.
I'll be happy to come back and give status reports if you would like.
Love it.
But be ready. You'll have a fair amount of work to do because we'll have both of these documents next year. So they'll be, I don't think it'll be as daunting as Metro Everett, but, which is an entirely new document, these-
Not rewriting the zoning code either, are you, with this one?
Maybe doing some things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I actually had a question.
Oh, yes.
Well, I'm just curious how you address regulating the river, the Snohomish River system. Is that within the context of the Puget Sound Regional Council, or how is that in your process? I mean, it's so far outside of the city.
So you're talking about the entire watershed?
The river. You know, you showed the river watershed, yeah.
Well, and it's the confluence of the three different rivers, the Skicomish, the Tolt, and the, Snoplomi, thank you. So those are all very big rivers, too, all coming together.
I understand that, yeah.
So, yeah, we have to all work together, and that's part of the role of the Puget Sound Partnership. But we also, all those jurisdictions abutting those rivers are required to prepare a shoreline master program, and they're all reviewed by Department of Ecology. So there's some coordination that is going on there.
I was wondering about the coordination part of it. Yeah, obviously. We're downstream.
Yes, we are. We are.
Does the county have a, they have an advisory group of planners that meet on the particular watersheds to kind of facilitate more coordination between the jurisdictions in terms of specific development codes and things like that? I mean, I know we all have our own kind of jurisdictional plans, but there is kind of a more coordinated going to the Snohomish River where a group kind of oversees and kind of keeps everybody updated in terms of what folks are doing downstream.
Yeah, there's actually a couple of different groups. The one that I sit on is called the Local Integrating Organization, and that's for the Snohomish watershed.
That's the one I was thinking of. Thank you.
Yeah, but then there's also, so back when the Chinook salmon were listed as endangered, so 1998, I believe it was.
Correct.
There, the area was divided up into WIRAs, so Water Resource Inventory Areas, and that was with the focus on the fish and fish passage. And those groups are still meeting, so the Snohomish River is WIRAS 7. And there are groups that have been meeting for years, trying to do what they can to help with the salmon. Make sure I got everybody.
When's the first meeting of the stakeholder, the advisory group?
So there is a schedule here. The last two pages of this document has the schedule. So as a matter of fact, that group had their kickoff meeting last night.
All right, then.
And they will meet April-
16th?
16th is the next meeting.
Fantastic.
Yep. Anyone else going once, going twice? Did you have some additional?
Yes, a couple of items. I put on the dais before you there, two planning efforts that will definitely have effect on the city of Everett. The first one would be the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 process. Currently, the city and Snohomish County and all the jurisdictions within- Currently, the city and Snohomish County and all the jurisdictions within Snohomish, Pierce, King, and Kitsap Counties are members of the Puget Sound Regional Council. In 2008, the PSRC adopted a regional growth strategy for the four counties, which has the effect under state law, under the Growth Management Act, as being the multi-county planning policies that are required by each of the counties then within those four counties to adopt countywide planning policies that are consistent with the regional plan. Those countywide planning policies then require local jurisdictions like the city and the county and all of the other cities to prepare comprehensive plans that are consistent with the countywide planning policies and the multi-county planning policies. And so we did our last major update of the comprehensive plan in 2015. And so we're required to also update every eight years under the Growth Management Act. And this is going to get a little confusing here because I'm going to talk about different timeframes that are driving us all crazy. But the Puget Sound Regional Council has initiated an update to Vision 2040 and to extend it out another 10 years to 2050. They're required under federal law as the regional agency that distributes federal transportation dollars throughout the region to have a transportation plan and a transportation plan that is consistent with a regional growth plan. The regional growth plan will, in the last update, went farther than previous efforts by setting growth targets or growth guidance to the local jurisdictions, which were then translated through countywide planning efforts into our comprehensive plan growth targets. And some of you have heard me in the past lament about how we didn't think we were treated realistically with the expectations for growth by the Puget Sound Regional Council. And so they have just concluded a scoping process for what will be included in the scope of the Vision 2050 update. We provided our comments a couple of weeks ago in a letter form, and many of the other jurisdictions have done the same. And the Regional Council will take all of those comments and adopt a final scope of work for the Vision 2050 update. Regardless of what goes into the scope, we know that 10 years more growth means we're going to have larger growth targets than under our current plans. The Puget Sound Regional Council looks to finish this work up within two years, by 2020, May of 2020, which last time they did this, it was a five-year process. This update is a two-year process, which they acknowledge is very aggressive in terms of timeframe. But they don't anticipate the same kind of major changes that were made in the last update to the regional growth strategy. And the reason that they're trying to get this done by 2020 is that, so that we can then begin our process of amending our countywide planning policies and updating our comprehensive plans for the next major update, which we're supposed to have done in 2023. And so all of this is to say that we're going to be busy both coordinating with the other jurisdictions within the four counties as PSRC rewrites the regional growth strategy or tweaks it or significantly changes it. We don't know exactly how much change to expect. I think a lot of us were suggesting that they do consider some significant changes. One of the recommendations that the city of Everett made is that this part of their organizing framework for the regional growth strategy is something they call regional geographies, where they clump cities together, categories of small cities, large cities, core cities, which would be like Lynwood and Bothell, metropolitan city, which Everett is the only one within Snohomish County. And they allocate population and job growth to these different categories of cities. And then in this last process, we all kind of worked it out amongst ourselves, who would be taking how much of what. And it worked out pretty easily for the small cities and the large cities because they all just happen to have about the amount of capacity in their growth plans to meet what the Regional Council allocated to those categories of geography. For Lynwood, Bothell, and Everett, the two core cities and the metropolitan city, we had to do some major head scratching, and then we ended up with a plan that on paper will accommodate the growth that has been allocated through the Regional Council. But whether or not we have the economy to support that kind of growth is well beyond our control, and we have no idea. We just have to show that we've got the capacity to grow to about 165,000 in 2035. So again, these dates are kind of crazy because when we do our next update in 2023, it'll be for a 20-year horizon out to 2043. So it'll be somewhere between 2040 and 2050. And so we're suggesting that the state make some changes to GMA, to that eight-year update cycle, to make it kind of coincide with both the, kind of the timeframe that we have. And my suggestion would be to put it at like on the fives, so 2025, 2035, 2045, because we get good census data from the decennial census about two years after the census occurs. And it's better to do your planning with fresh data. It's more accurate. And doing an update every eight years, just as soon as you, you know, catch your breath from one update, well, here's what we're doing next. Four years later, after 2015 and 2019, we have to do our Shoreline Master Program update. Then we get done with that, and we're into the GMA update. So it's a never-ending cycle of updates under these state mandates.
Is there any conversations about these planning processes happening, you know, more in alignment with the census? Because it kind of doesn't make sense to even do a big, significant regional tweak without, with the 2020 census coming up and less-
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be having, using, you know, 10-year-old census data to help inform the 2020 update. Well, it just so happens that the other item that I put on the dais in front of you is something that could lead to better coordination. This is called Roadmap to Washington. It's something that the legislature in 2015 said, you know, we need to take a more comprehensive look at all of the state laws that affect how we plan and how we grow. And so they have appointed and funded a study through the Ruckles House Center. They're calling Roadmap to Washington's Future. And that effort is being led by a planner, Joe Tovar, who has been around for a while and knows GMA and planning very well. But they've been doing this outreach process since 2015 to develop a list of issues that they are now doing more outreach after they prepared an initial report and provided it to the legislature. The legislature gave them a little bit more money and said, give us a final report by 2019, about the same time that our Shoreline Master Program update is due, that the legislature will be getting that report from the Ruckles House Center, identifying some things that should be looked at to better integrate all of the statutes that govern how we plan. There is on the back page, and I apologize, my printer gave it to you in black and white, but there's, it says, City Beat noted, there's, this is a little informational piece out of the Association of Washington Cities. It talks a little bit about all of the different statutes at the very bottom of that page that are among those that are candidates for further study. So the legislature will get a report at the end of, or middle of 2019, and they won't take it up, of course, until the next legislative session beginning in 2020. That will begin an interesting discussion to see how state laws may be changed to create a more comprehensive strategy for how we plan and how that affects not only the local cities and counties, but special purpose districts that are basically exempt from GMA. And then one of the little stickers on the bottom left-hand there, it says, "Envisioning a desired future requires community dialogue about values, priorities, and aspirations." And that's one of the things that is in the legislation, is engage Washington residents in identifying a desired statewide vision for Washington's future. So all of these things will eventually, I don't know how well they're, will integrate, but they're all up for discussion now. And it's interesting, the timelines are a little bit different for each of those efforts, and they're different legislative authorities responsible for approving the two different things that I mentioned there. But there is information on those flyers, if you want to look at websites, that you can find out a lot more about the process for each of those. And we'll bring you updates as we can, especially if it means more work for us, and undoubtedly it will.[1711.83][1711.83](Laughter).
Does anybody have questions for Alan regarding these subjects? Anybody? Go on.
I just had one. Alan, you saw that the legislation passed on CLT at the State Building Codes Council.
Cross-laminated timbers.
Now approved into the, you can now use it as a mechanism.
Oh, that's great. I didn't know that.
I'll send you the stuff on it. It's pretty-
Could you send that to me? Yes, I'll send it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg.
That's one of those things that slipped through that-
I never heard about.
Yeah. Nobody. It was kind of like reading through some junk yesterday, and Guy Plumbo and Mark Elias were the sponsors.
Out of Snohomish County.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, that's all that we have for you tonight.
I think that's it. We are adjourned.[1775.63][1775.63](Knock on door) I've been waiting to do that.[1777.42][1777.42](Laughter).